We are going to call to order of the Kensington Town Council meeting for January 8th. Before we do a moment of silence, I just want to make one announcement. Council member Ann Lichter is feeling under the weather this evening, so she will not be joining us tonight. So please keep Ann in your thoughts and prayers so she feels better. Now we're going to go into a moment of silence. I would like to bring up that we keep in our thoughts and prayers the people of Southern California, who are living through this horrific fires. I know for us this evening and probably later on, we're going to be talking about things that, you know, affect our own town and some of the things that may annoy us. But our town is intact. We have our friends and our family. And people in Southern California right now are facing just monumental horrific devastation. So let's please keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Does anyone have anybody else that you'd like to lift up? Okay, if we can close our eyes and bow our heads for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. The approval of the minutes, we'll go ahead and move on to that. I did not see any edits from the council from the minutes that Susan sent out. So unless somebody wants to make some edits this evening, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Draw move that we approve the minutes of the December 18th, 2024 Town Council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the curbside food waste collection program. This evening, we have a guest speaker who's going to talk about the program that we are about ready to enter. And I will let Town Manager Matt Hoffman introduce our speaker for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. At the December 18th Council meeting, we approved a curbside food waste collection program with our contractor Ecology Services. The food waste will be taken to the Maryland Bioenergy Center. Our guest Andrew Casili is with us this evening. He has a presentation and will discuss a little bit about the process, the facility, and the items that they'll be able to accept in the program.
Thanks, Matt. I'll go ahead when we get the slide deck loaded up. Thank you all for allowing us to come before you. As said, my name is Andrew Casili. I oversee government relations for Bioenergy DevCo. I'm going to be tag teaming this presentation this evening with my partner Vinnie Bevavino. I'll handle the first part and then I'll turn it over to Vinnie to introduce himself and to talk to you a little bit specifically about the specifics of our partnership. So first, let's start off with just a little background, if you will. BTS Biogas is our sister company over in Europe. And between that partnership, we have over 25 years of experience in running anaerobic digesters with over 250 facilities in other countries. Our first facility built in the United States is right down the road in Jessup, Maryland. And I'll show you a picture of that. Next slide. So again, we're very excited to partner with you on expanding your current recycling program. Being able to expand a food waste collection is a direction many of the locals are going, as well as states. And the federal government recognizes the advantage in moving this direction. So we're partners, we're excited that you all are early adopters and we're eager to work with you on this. Next slide. So as I said, our first facility is located right on the Maryland Food Center Authority. It's sandwiched in on a very tight envelope of about five and a half acres. And on that tiny little footprint, we process about 115,000 tons of food waste a year. It's a key location being right on the Maryland Food Center Authority because we're surrounded by a lot of major food processors that serve as feedstock for us right next door. Next slide. We're very excited about our new facility that's going online in Delaware. Contrary to being on a small footprint, this is an urban model on 250 acres. And because we have such a large footprint, we're able to include composting technology as well as anaerobic diggers at this facility so that we can take a variety, a larger variety of feedstocks for organics recycling. Next slide. So just in a very simplified form, so everybody understands what anaerobic digestion is. It's vesselized. It's one form of organics breakdown where it's actually, you put food waste into a vessel and you deprive it of oxygen. And in that anaerobic state, the bacteria that is found naturally in the food waste will, excuse me, start to multiply. It will consume the waste and it will produce a gas, a methane gas. This is very similar to, if you will, say, a cow's stomach. The only difference between our vessel and a cow is when a cow's finished, it exits the methane gas out the backside where we actually capture that methane gas, clean it up, and use it as renewable energy. So what we get out of it is food waste going in. And the three products that are coming out are recycled water, an organic soil amendment, and renewable energy. Next slide, I show you some actual pictures of our facility, give you a little bit better walkthrough. They see a picture is worth 1,000 words. So you can kind of walk through this. Far right, you see a truck entering our facility. It goes over some scales. Once it's weighed, it comes to our indoor facility where the food waste is dumped onto our tipping floor for inspection. With visual inspection, we can remove contamination that we see before it is loaded into hoppers. Once it's loaded into hoppers, it's then processed into a slurry to be fed into one of our two very large digesters that you can see to the far right. Actually, standing in the foreground, I see is the current Lieutenant Governor Aruna Miller and the Secretary of the Environment McElwain toward our facility. At the bottom three pictures are what comes out. We recycle the water by extracting the water. We can use that for beneficial reuse or just return it back to the water cycle rather than have it go into the landfill where it would eventually become leachate. The center picture is of the material that's called digestate, which is often resembles coffee grounds and that's used in agriculture to nourish the soil. And then the final shot is of our filters that we use to clean and clean up the methane gas to what they call renewable natural gas, where it can be a viable renewable energy source. Next slide. So with that, I'm going to switch over. I'm going to let Vinnie talk to you about the actual operations and our partnership with you all and how that's going to work.
Good evening to everybody. Thank you for having us. And we look forward to not only this presentation and answering any questions that you may have, but also just this partnership in general. So the Maryland Bioenergy Center, which is our facility that Andrew was just talking about in Jessup, Maryland, is a facility that's designed to help central Maryland and the mid-Atlantic region recycle more organic waste. We do, the types of companies or industries that we serve, and I use that word loosely because we're going to talk about, you know, places like the town of Kensington. But primarily, our main customers are first and foremost those that are collecting and transporting food wastes from where the material is being generated to our facility. So we often work with the haulers. And those haulers are then in turn are servicing a variety of different companies and entities within the food system. First and foremost are food processors. Some, there are some very large food processors in the Washington DC Baltimore metropolitan region that are recycling their food waste at the Maryland Bioenergy Center. There are also a lot of food distribution companies that are distributing to our grocery stores, to our restaurants, and et cetera. We service them. Sometimes they have out of date materials. Sometimes they have damaged product, recalled material, things like that. We get a lot of material from food retailers or grocery stores that is often times again, material that is out of date, out of quality, that can't be donated and otherwise would have gotten thrown away into, you know, landfills or incinerators. We often, we often get material from a variety of different food service sources, ranging from large ones like cafeterias at universities or conference centers or hotels, smaller ones like restaurants and even cafes. So we're getting material from the haulers that are servicing those kinds of companies or sources. And what we're most excited to talk about today is the work that we're doing with municipalities. So like the town of Kensington. We recycle, and we're going to go into a little more detail in a future slide. But what we are, what we're great at doing is recycling all sorts of food materials. So anything that, anything that we're eating or would have eaten is able to come to our digester and get recycled into the products that Andrew mentioned. So, you know, we'll go into detail on that in a moment. So you go to the next slide. That was an image of a very large truck of a food processor. I'm sorry, just to go back, you don't have to go back, but just to describe that, that was a picture of a truck that was emptying, a truck full of watermelon rinds and pineapple peels and other things like that that we were recycling. So I wanted to just take a moment and just kind of describe the relationship and describe, you know, how we fit into it. And we are not the only piece of this puzzle, but we are a major piece. So the kind of the three legs of the stool or the three points of our triangle here, our recycling triangle here, first starts with the town of Kensington and the residents of the town of Kensington. So that's, you know, first and foremost. So you, you and your residents would be producing this material and looking to discard it. Ecology Services is a major part in this and I always want to make sure that everybody's clear what they do and what we do. Ecology Services is a wonderful waste collection and environmental services company. They bring us material from other sources already. We know them, we work with them, we trust them, and they do a really good job. But their job is to provide the collection containers that are going to be, that are going to be used to, and provided to residents, they're going to be, and I don't, you know, and I'll say because we are not, you know, fully versed in the details of this, but their job would be to collect the material and deliver that material over to the digester. So what we're not able to answer are questions about collection schedules or, you know, frequencies and things of that nature. That's, that's their job and they will do, they will do a very good job at it. But our job at the Maryland Bioenergy Center is to receive and recycle the food waste that Ecology Services collects from the town of Kensington and delivers to us. And what we do with it is what we will, instead of it going to a landfill or an incinerator where it will kind of just end its life, we will recycle it into two very important products that we are excited about, that renewable energy, the renewable natural gas that gets put back into our pipeline system and heats our homes and businesses and displaces the use of fossil fuels. And soil amendment, that digestate, so that good nutrient-rich soil that is going to farms and other kinds of companies that are making, that are making top soils and other products and putting it back on, onto our land for good use. So that's kind of the arrangement that I just want to make sure that we're all aware of. Go on to the next one. So what do we accept and what do we not accept? I just have a warning that my internet connection is unstable. So please let me know if you are having, except, the golden rule is what we have up on the upper left in parentheses. Anything that we eat or once would have eaten is acceptable to come to the digester. So obviously, we're talking about produce. We have, you know, any kind of fruits and vegetables is great. You know, I wanted to call out some of the kind of, some of the more, you know, unique things, but like pumpkins, gourds, and other kinds of fall decorations and things like that are also great. Any kind of meats are fine, including the bones. I wouldn't say that to a butcher who maybe be delivering us a truck full of bones, but feel free to keep your, you know, chicken bones or whatever and keep that, you know, coming to us. To the extent possible, and I don't, I like to not get into a lot of, I try to make this as easy as possible, but you know, to the extent possible, oyster shells and clam shells are generally not, they do not break down. But you see the scale that we're doing this at. A few clam shells are not going to disrupt our system, but just so you know. Any kind of dairy is fine, milk cheeses, liquid solids, all that is fine, including, and then, you know, baked goods is also, should be included. Greases, you know, any kind of fats that you may have that are coming out of your kitchen. So if you have, if you've made bacon and you're needing to not put that bacon grease down your drain, which you shouldn't do, that bacon grease can, can, can be included in your food waste bin. Or if you have a fryer at your home and you want to replace that oil, you can, that oil can come to our, to our digester as well in your food waste. Any kind of coffee grounds, coffee filter as well, that's fine. We're okay with like a, you know, that amount of paper. Just to say it, anything that's cooked or soupy or saucy or sloppy, otherwise co-mingled materials also totally fine. And just to say it, we're also fine with any kind of spoiled food. So anything that's moldy or otherwise not currently edible, also fine. Our bugs love it. And we have de-packaging equipment, meaning that we have machines that mechanically remove plastics and metals and other kinds of non-biodegradable materials from our food that we recycle. We don't want trash. We really don't. We in fact, you know, that's not what we want. I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, paint the wrong picture by any means. But if you have a yogurt cup, you don't need to scoop out the yogurt and put it into, into your food waste bin. You could throw the whole yogurt cup into the bin. A bag of salad that's gone bad or something like that also, that's fine. So we can, we have some tolerance for, for non-biodegradable plastics that include food. And that's kind of the big thing. If it includes food, bring it with it, bring it to us. What we can accept, and the biggest things that we can accept are things that are wood or wood derived, which is fine because you all have another collection program for yard wastes, right? That's going to the Montgomery County Composting Facility, which is great. Anaerobic digesters are not good at breaking down woody materials. So any kind of yard waste that you have or Christmas trees or wreaths or other things like that that might, that might be, that may be collected. Paper, cardboard, including pizza boxes or other things like that, we'd like you to exclude. Any kind of food packaging that does not have any food in it, we don't want, just to say that, you know. So an empty cup of yogurt, no thank you. You should recycle that, but not send it to us. We can't receive any kind of pet waste, so your dog waste or cat waste, please don't include that with your food waste, as well as diapers from your children. We cannot accept that. Or any other kind of human waste. We are not allowed to take that material in. One of the, one of the most challenging materials that we don't want you to include is any glass. That stuff shatters and it just turns into little shards that goes into our system, unlike plastic that we're able to screen out. Anything that, you know, this is a common theme with recyclers. Anything that wraps around something is really difficult. So big plastic bags, ropes, things like that, no thank you. Any soils, if you have a potted plant or if you're just, you know, moving some soil around in your backyard, we'd like to not include that into your food waste. And then if you have any, you know, just as a blanket, any other non-biodegradable materials we'd like to exclude. If you have any questions or if there's something that you or your residents would like more clarity on, or if you have a question about a specific material, you can always reach out to either us or Ecology Services and we would be able to get that answer to you. You go to the next slide. Andrew, I might ask you to actually explain this slide. I think that this is probably best served by you.
Thanks, Vinnie. And what I'm going to do in the, because I know we had 10 minutes and I believe we're over. We're going to jump right through to the end, just so that we have some time for you all to ask any questions that you may have.
Sure. I mean, I have one. Great presentation. One of the things that I did find really interesting was that you will take certain oils. What's the best way for people to get the oils recycled? Is it to put it in a plastic container and put that out with it? I mean, because we're going to have these little rolling totes. I don't think we just want to dump a bunch of oil into the tote, right?
You know, food waste is sloppy and adding some oil to that is not going to make it too much sloppier. I don't actually think, the way, the, you know, the way I do it in my house is, you know, I'm putting, the biggest thing that my family creates is coffee grounds, followed by vegetable peels and random other things. But yeah, well, we have oil. We don't, we're not producing gallons of it. I don't have a fryer or anything like that. So it's like the scrapings after making bacon or something like that. That's, that amount, you know, a cup to five cups of oil or something like that is fine to put, just include right into your food waste.
You can also freeze it.
If you have a, if you have a large quantity, if you have a gallon, if you're replacing the oil of a fryer or something like that and you want to put it in a gallon jug, that's fine as well.
So I have a couple of questions, but I just wanted to thank Vinnie and Andrew for the presentation and also for the tour that we got. So I was on the tour that you gave to some of our Sustainable Kensington representatives. And I think there are some of them on the, on the call tonight too, on our, during, I've joined the meeting. It was fantastic and we're super excited to be partnering with you and Ecology on this venture. So I just wanted to say that you kind of, you stopped on the slide about outreach and education. And I wanted to just say that we're looking forward to working with you to produce the materials for our residents so that they know what, you know, for example, what they can and can't do. And a little bit more on how this is similar to, but not the same as composting and, you know, just the education. So we'll be following up with you directly to work on that after our next Sustainable Kensington meeting. So thanks, thanks again for offering to do that. My question was, we had a question during our last Town Council meeting a month ago when people, we kind of, we introduced this, this partnership and agreement and the curbside pickup program. People wanted to know, so right now with the composting program that many people are enrolled in, they get a bag of compost back at the end of the year or whatever, a couple of bags. People were wondering, is it possible and safe, I guess, to get some of the digestate? That wasn't talked about on the tour. I know that you said you were partnering with some of the agricultural community nearby to get that onto farms. But is it possible and safe to use if we were to, you know, set up a program where they could get some of it back?
So it is totally safe to use our digestate and it's totally fine to, okay, I'm sorry. It's totally safe to, sorry, my daughter just jumped in. Totally safe to use our digestate and it is a great soil amendment. The problem with it though is that we have really, you know, the composting facility that you are, that you're using, which is a wonderful state-of-the-art composting facility that's run by Maryland Environmental Services and, you know, owned by Montgomery County, has a big bagging component to it. They make bags of compost there. So it's very easy for them to get the material to the residents. We don't have really any good way to do that. We fill up full tractor trailers of digestate, so 22 tons at a time. And that is then delivered to these farms or soil blending companies and things like that. So it's much more of a logistical problem that we would need to have some sort of answer for.
Great, well, thank you, thank you for letting me know it's at least possible because maybe there's something down the road where we could, you know, we could get a truck to deliver it to Town Hall or something and dump it and it could be a community pickup.
We have done that, Nate, to Vinnie's point, on a large scale. You know, if you're like, we need a large volume of material, that'd be a little, something that we could consider. But like small samples, at this point, we've talked about it, we're just not to that point. We're not really designed for that at this point.
Okay, great, great to know. Thank you so much.
Does anybody else on the council have a question before I open it up? Darren?
I have a quick question because we're, we're just starting this. And at the last meeting, we talked about evaluating the program's success. And I sort of looked to the other recycling program as my example for this. And I've heard that, you know, nobody recycles glass. So we throw it in there and who knows where it goes. And I've heard that we, you know, recycle paper and it gets put into, strapped into tight bundles. And if there are, you know, a couple pieces of contaminated material sticking out, the whole thing gets rejected. So when you tell us that there are certain things that we can't put in there, like glass bottles or maybe an empty pizza box or, you know, if somebody takes, because I mean, I walk by people's recycle bins and I see tons of stuff that doesn't belong in them. If somebody puts a plastic Safeway bag full of food waste in it, I mean, at what point does like the whole load get rejected and thrown out? Or does it get rejected and thrown out?
Darren, I'll start off and Vinnie can follow up with the, to your, to your point. Listen, traditionally in recycling, the good news is recycling is coming a long way and glass is quickly, there's like four or five companies now that are working on, they have very viable products that they're producing with recycled glass. So we are seeing that market change. One of the Achilles' heels has always been in the traditional recycling is the contamination. And the number one contaminant for recycling is food waste. For us, food waste is not the contamination. So where we say, Vinnie will go through and list all the things we don't want, these are things we don't want. It doesn't mean that we can't pull them out ourselves, but we ask that we're partnering with the residents in the community to try to do a diligent job at separating the material. We're required by law to only have a certain percentage of contamination, which would be non-organic material in order to be a recycling facility. So we want to make sure that we're working with you and the residents to ensure that they're doing a good job at doing their best to weed out the materials that we, that we don't want to have to process on site. Because anything that we can't process through, it's racked up as contamination and then we have to deal with it in that way. So it's, it doesn't ruin our batch of cookies, it just makes it more difficult for us. And so that's why we say, please don't give it to us.
Okay. And how many, so you talked about here, required by law to only have a certain percentage of contamination. How often do you exceed that and what happens when you exceed it?
So we're, we have our, we are a recycling facility designated from Maryland Department of the Environment. And there are regulations that we operate in, like other recycling facilities. And so we're required to ensure that we, we monitor and we track. And if we feel that we're getting close to or beyond, we have to look at our main offenders, our clients, and say that we really need to work with us on trying to make sure that you're keeping your contamin, because we're a pass-through entity. So the material's coming to us. If we can get the folks on the front end to remove that material before it comes, obviously, that's a benefit to the whole process.
Okay, thank you.
Connor, Nate, you guys good? Does anyone in the audience have a question? Please raise your hand. Leslie? You're on mute.
Okay. Quick question about pizza boxes. So it seems as though a soiled part of the cardboard would not be composted and the clean part of the cardboard can be recycled, but they don't want the soiled part. So a change would be the soiled part now goes in the trash and the clean part goes into the recycling. Is that correct?
Yes, if you, you, as long as there's no grease on the cardboard, it can be recycled. But you have to be monitoring that. That's where it gets tricky because people will get lazy and just throw their pizza boxes in the recycling. If it's got, if it's got oil on it, it'll get rejected and it won't get sent through the recycling process. But to your point, if you're diligent enough to separate them, the dry cardboard can easily be recycled and the soiled cardboard would go in the trash.
Okay, that's just a small change from. That's just a, a small change from, um, ability to compost it right now. And I just wanted to get that clarified. Okay. Good. Thanks.
All right, John, and then we'll go to Alicia. John Gerson?
Hi, um, just real quick question. Is this program in addition to or instead of the existing program at town hall?
Matt, do you want to answer that or I can do it if you want? I mean, we're keeping, uh, compost crew for now at town hall. So you can still do it there. We're not changing that for now.
Okay.
And obviously if you are a compost crew customer, uh, we, that's up to you if you want to maintain that relationship.
Great. Thanks much.
Yeah, correct. So we have, I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, we have the compost crew contract for, I think, at least 11 more months. Um, and then we can renew it again. So.
The only thing, uh, Tracy, I would add is we are evaluating maybe moving the community compost location from town hall over near the, uh, M and T drive-through lot.
Right. We want to be able to capture, uh, the, um, farmer's market, um, items. Alicia?
We heard a lot about this percent of contamination. Can you give us a number, like, is it one, two, five, half a percent? You're on mute.
Yeah, sorry, I had to come off, uh, come off. So where a, a recycling facility in Maryland is required to be at four, no, no greater than 4% of contamination.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, Joe?
Thank you. How long do you suppose it will take a town of 2,100 people to reach some acceptable level of success in this new program? I mean, I know it's a guess, but, uh, I think your, your experience would give us some ideas to how long it's going to take.
So, um, one of the, and I'm, and I'm sorry, due to time, I didn't, um, show you. One of the slides is where we put out our totals, uh, for, uh, climate mitigation, our success for the past year. One of the things we can also do is, uh, we can track your numbers, your tonnage. And at the end of the year, we can show you the total volume of food waste that you've diverted and, um, your, um, carbon reduction score. As far as a success, um, this is gonna, depending on how you roll it out, if it is, um, if every single resident is going to, uh, be required to participate, you're going to get different levels of participation. Some will be just like students in a class. You'll get kids that are going to do everything perfect. You'll get kids that'll do pretty good. And then you'll get kids that just don't want to be involved at all. But in, in general, as long as you make it easy for the folks that are on the front line, we find the compliance generally, um, is, is fairly good. Because it, if you have the bin anyway and you're putting it out, uh, what we find is by maintaining a, a bin that has organics in it, the rest of your material, um, is dry. So therefore, um, you can go for longer periods of time without having to, to take that out. In some cases, you can actually do some right sizing on your collection.
And do you provide a monthly, uh, figure on, on, uh, the tonnage saved from the town of Kensington?
I can answer for Vinny and say, so we can.
I would say that that, that starts to become on, that starts to, we would provide that to, at least to ecology services. Uh, and they may be able to provide better detail or more, you know, like maybe at like the route level or like the, you know, uh, you know, daily level, things like that. So yeah, we, we do have, we do keep record on, uh, at all scales of time, da- daily, weekly and monthly. Um, and provide that information. So every truck that comes onto our property is weighed in and then weighed out. So we understand how much material every truck come, every truck that's been delivered. We don't, we don't know, you know, what, which route that came from or anything like that, because that's not our, our scope of work. But, but ecology services certainly does. So to the extent that they could take our data and then expand on it with, uh, with more granularity, certainly possible. And I, and I would, uh, you know, get, get, we would want to answer that question with, with, with them.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Joe.
I don't see any other hands. Uh, council, are you good? Okay. Andrew, Vinny, I want to thank you for coming in, uh, coming, uh, on Zoom tonight to meet with us and to provide this information. Uh, I personally, I'm very excited about the program. I've not been food composting, but I am pretty, I'm very anxious to get started with it. So.
We're excited as well. And, and one other thing is if you are doing like a, a town hall or something like that, where you're bringing folks in, we certainly don't mind coming in and participating to, to help kind of spread the word if it's helpful.
Okay. Well, we hope to, uh, to launch it, you know, uh, and get people on board as quickly as possible. So.
Thank you so much for inviting us to be here.
Yeah, we appreciate everybody's time tonight.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Take care.
They stay warm, but you're at home. So hopefully you're already warm. Okay. All right, we're going to move on. Uh, I do, uh, before we go to number two, I do want to, uh, give a big shout out to Public Works for all the work they did on the snow removal. Um, they started their day at 2:00 AM on Monday morning. And, uh, while, you know, other county residents probably saw the truck once down their street. You probably saw it five or six times. So I know it's kind of a pain in the neck for our driveway aprons, but the more they can push the snow back, the wider the streets get really quickly. So, um, we've got the, got some good shout outs for the guys on the listserv, but I do want to publicly acknowledge that they did a great job. And they're still out there now, uh, working to, you know, make improvements where they can. It's bloody cold out there, so it's not as fast because the sun's not helping us out as much. But, um, they did a great job. So if you see them, be sure to, to thank them. Okay. So we're going to go down to number two. Um, I think everybody knows that, uh, the, uh, county executive, we talked about this at a, uh, at a meeting previously, had, uh, pulled the, um, the Noise Library Foundation project. He wanted to, um, take it out of the CIP. Uh, we had a big meeting with the county executive to find out that this is really not a feasible because so much money has been raised and it would be, money has been spent. And trying to give the money back to those who've donated is very difficult. The county was trying to make a alternative solution to make the project a little cheaper. But that really wasn't going to work because it would require changes to what is currently, um, the architectural, uh, design, which means they would have to go back to the drawing board, go back to the historic trust and the Historic Preservation Commission. And this would just make the project even more expensive. So, uh, the county executive has agreed to do this in a two phase. So they will start with the basement program, a contract for the basement. And the foundation is going back to work to raise some more money. So, um, to date, the town of Kensington has provided $75,000 to the renovation of, uh, Noise Library. This was over a three-year period of $25,000. Of course, the foundation is looking for more funding. So we are, uh, I'm asking the council tonight to move money that we already have in the budget, um, for, um, some, uh, murals to transfer that to, uh, a Noise Library Foundation, a $25,000 grant for, um. So we're not adding more money to the budget, we're just moving some money around. So I want, we are looking for support from the council so that we could ask, um, um, town manager Hoffman to go ahead and make the donation to, to Noise. The foundation is going to be making some announcements soon, uh, about how they're going to raise the rest of the, the funds. So, uh, council, do you have any questions, uh, regarding, um, lending some money out of the, we have, I think we currently had $40,000. Is that correct in that line item?
Correct. We had, uh, 40,000. So the funds would be transferred out of the mural program, uh, which has $40,000. It's under economic development and the town mural program.
And we currently do not have anything lined up right now. So, uh, this does not include the state grant that was, uh, provided. These are funds that the town had put into our budget.
Tracy, I have a, just one question. I, I, I fully support this. This is really important, uh, foundation of our community. Just was curious if you anticipate that we'll get, uh, requested or there'll be other requests for subsequent years, uh, for making donations. I mean, in the previous meeting, you had said it wasn't exactly clear how much they were going to ask of us. But I mean, this seems reasonable, but I was wondering if there were more.
Well, it's, it, you know, usually in the, and I made this clear and usually in the middle of a budget year, it's kind of hard to, because it, we had not budgeted for it. But we do have this funding available. And, uh, since we don't have anything planned right now, we could push any murals off. We couldn't do anything until the summer anytime, anyway. So, uh, we're, um, we're able to take the 25,000 now. Uh, if the council preferred, we could take the 40. Uh, I would have no issue with that. But I think in, uh, next year's budget in the 25, 26, we will probably do another, uh, donation within the budget specifically for Noise.
Of a sim, of a similar amount?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Been doing it at 25,000, uh, you know, per donation is what we have.
That makes, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, I'll get to questions in just a minute. Connor, do you have any?
Yeah, just a couple, um, because you had mentioned it, but with the county executive splitting it up, what are the two fiscal years, just a timeline? Are they starting the basement construction in the next fiscal year, beginning July 1?
I believe the fiscal year, they're going to start the, the, um, they're going to do the basement dig out of the spring.
Okay, great. So.
I mean, they have the funds. I mean, they have the, um, they have the permits. They had a contractor. The only thing is they could not sign a contract because not all the funds had been earmarked. So that was the holdup. But by, uh, going back to the contractor, allowing them to put it into phases, then they're able to stretch it out into a different time period. And the foundation has more time to go out and raise some funding.
Right. So they split the project cost across two FYs. They'll fully fund the first part, which means, okay, great. Because that's what I want to see is our, I'd like to see the commitment by the county by putting a shovel in the ground and getting the project started. A, a project that starts is at considerably less risk of further CIP disruptions. Not to say that there is an additional fundraising. I am unbelievably supportive of this. I'm a, a huge lover of Noise Children's Library. All of my kids have absolutely loved it. It also is as much a economic development and driver into our town of bringing people in, especially on Saturday mornings and rainy days. You know, that whole area is just flooded with families that come specifically for that programming. So, uh, commend you and Matt for finding a way to reprogram funds immediately in this FY. I, you know, fully supportive of 25. I would be supportive of the full 40, knowing that we could put back mural funding in next year's budget to begin, you know, July 1. And since we don't have any commitments for any murals between now and July, um, I would even be supportive of the full 40.
Okay. Um, I have to, I have to say that the foundation, um, the board really stood their ground. I was very impressed with the meeting that we had with Mark. There was probably about 25 people there, uh, from the county executive's office, from, um, the library. Kate Stewart, our county council member, now president of the county council. And Jared Solomon was there, our state delegate. And, um, and it was just, it was a filled room. There was a lot of passionate speech from our, uh, from the board. And they won them over. And I was, I was just very impressed about them talking about the library and what it's done for, um, you know, educational reading for younger children. Darren, did you have any comments?
No, I, I support it as well.
Does, uh, anyone in the audience have a question? Uh, Jody, you're on mute, so.
Okay. I had two questions. Um, how much money does the foundation need to raise? And can you really do a mural for 15,000? And if you can't, why not just give them the full 40,000?
Okay. Well, that's a good, that's a good, uh, question. You can't really unless it's really tiny. But, uh, you know, you could always put a down pot, down, you know, deposit on it and then pay in the next year. So, uh, but I, you know, we definitely like to see, um, the, uh, motion to take the 40. They need a couple of million dollars. So they're going to have to raise two to three million dollars. And I think they're going to be able to do it. So, uh, Joe?
Uh, yes, thank you. So, um, with the proposed 25 or 40,000, that would bring us to what total? More than $100,000?
Well, it would bring us to, uh, we've given 75 so far. So either 100,000 or a little over 100,000.
Okay. Just to, thanks for that clarification. And do we know what end date there is for the completion of this project?
This is not a, this is a complicated project because, you know, you are picking up the building and building a, uh, there is a, um, cellar underneath, but you're making it deeper, similar to what they're doing at Warner Mansion right now. Um, and then they're going to be putting in the elevator shaft also. That's part of the first, um, phase. And then they'll be renovating. So I, I would say two years minimum that this will take.
And you, you anticipate that, uh, there would be a budget item next year for about 25,000 for the project as well?
Uh, in the town budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Okay. I'm not seeing any hands. So, uh, I would love to get a motion from the town council.
I'd move that we reprogram the entirety of the $40,000 dedicated right now in our Economic Development Fund for murals toward the Noise Children's Library Foundation.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All right. Uh, all those approved?
Aye.
Darren, did you say aye?
Yes, aye.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We're going to move on to, um, to the council reports. Um, and I would ask that, uh, maybe we'll start Connor and Clonan. You want to just, uh, and probably Darren can come into this one too. Maybe a little bit of an update on the water main break this morning on Farragut.
Sure. Yeah, I was going to start with it. We had two water main breaks within the town boundaries, one immediately outside. The first one was at Lexington and Farragut. And it proceeded to, you know, as water main breaks do, um, flood the street. That street has a, you know, it, it's downhill. So it really was running water, filling driveways, but with the temperatures freezing over rapidly. So I'd say just two things as a reminder to residents. If you have a, you know, brown colorization or a drop in water pressure, you go outside and you see a geyser or water or your street is a river, immediately, as fast as you can, contact WSSC. And I, I'll put something out on the town listserv. They have an app you can download. They have a telephone number. They have a website that you can report it through. I will say it works really, really well. They are very responsive. It is a real-time system. We were able to see it, report it. And then Darren, I think what, P, WSSC was onsite within maybe 15 minutes, um, immediately beginning repairs. The second water main break was on the north side of town at Kensington Parkway in Ferndale. Same thing, it was reported. The work took a little bit, the crew took a little bit longer to get there because it was the same crew that moved from one site to the other. But both have been dealt with. If you put it on the listserv, you know, let your, your neighbors know. But also don't be afraid to call town hall. Because the, the other thing that we were immediately able to do, so another tip of the hat to the town crew, because they were out plowing, we were able to, you know, I, I was able to fly Joe down and explain what was happening. And they immediately came and made multiple passes with the salt and sand truck to minimize and, and start to get rid of the ice buildup on the street because it was getting to be unsafe. They put out some cones to reduce the traffic across that street as well. Um, and so, you know, again, some of the little perks of living in a small town where you know, everybody on the staff is, you know, they were able to immediately, uh, address it and make the situation as safe as possible for the residents on the street.
Well, we were very lucky. It was not a Sunday morning or a Saturday morning, and though it was, that staff was on site. So that, but kudos definitely to staff and, uh, getting it reported right away. And, and I know, uh, at least one resident did get water in their basement. And, and I know at least one resident did get water in their basement because of the, because of the break.
Yeah. And this is, you know, the other thing that's challenging, right? Think about all of the ice buildup and things that happened, right? The water's got to go somewhere, those stormwater inlets is where it goes. But some of those were blocked by ice. You know, we worked to break that up and just channelize the water in there. But that's why the speed of reporting and, you know, for the town crew and staff to be able to get their eyes on it. Just the faster you can let people know, the better.
Okay. Did you have anything else you want to report?
Yeah, sure. I've got just a couple of things. The parking task force met last night. We had two main agenda items. We were only able to accomplish one. I'll start with the one we didn't. We were going to meet with Parking Planning's Parking Division and have a conversation about how the county looks at parking and their strategies and some of their resources. We have to reschedule that due to a power outage from the staff at Parking Planning. They lost their internet and weren't able to join us. So we'll reschedule that. They've already provided some dates and I will coordinate that with the Parking Task Force. And then we also began looking over a, in drafting a mission statement and some guiding principles about, you know, what is the purview of the Parking Task Force? One thing that we are looking at that we will talk with Parking Division on is, you know, when and where and what work we would want to contract with a parking consultant, which they also, you know, recommend. And they would, the county's Parking Division has volunteered to help write our scope of work. You know, I believe our intent is to use that scope of work in that immediate, call it problem area that we have, where our businesses and residential bump into each other, you know, Howard Avenue, Kensington Parkway, Montgomery Avenue. But the Parking Task Force will also look at over time, things like, you know, our signage and wayfinding. And, you know, our, our public parking lots, are they, do they have signs that people know when and where they can park? And our residential parking permit program, does that need an overhaul? But we'll get into more of that as the, as the year goes on with the Parking Task Force. But a kudos, I think Joe's on. Joe, thank you. I've looked at your draft, but I had a, I believe the technical term is a hell of a day and I've not had a chance to share it with the mayor or the council, but I will. I've looked at your comments and the edits. Speedy reply and they all look great. So just everything is, you know, I really appreciate all the, the hard work from the Parking Task Force. Two others, Matt, it looks like we may have some progress on some EV charger maintenance. So you have, we reached out to Pepco, found somebody in the right place who is, their job is local government outreach and they are working with us. But Matt, it sounds like they're going to go back to the vendor and start evaluating these for fix.
Yeah, we had a phone call with Alberto this afternoon and he said he was going to reach out to the vendor. He was hoping to have something in about 48 hours and he was going to follow up.
Perfect. And if we can just close the loop with Ann at Pepco, that'd be great. And keep that as a friendly relationship.
Well, I, I think we also need to, I mean, if we don't hear from him in a week, I mean, that's, this is a typical Pepco type of thing where they get back to you and then they disappear. So.
Yeah, and that, Ann has already reached out to me again, more or less saying, keep me in the loop. And if you don't like, don't let this sit. So if we aren't getting anything even Monday or Tuesday, let's let her know. And, and she seems to want to be able to help in her capacity as a local government liaison. That is all I have.
Did you want to mention the Will Juwando's?
Oh, yeah, thank you. So, yeah, I, you know, I scribbled a note and then I took a bunch of notes about anaerobic composting. Nate, thanks for that. Some may have seen it. It has, I know, and I couldn't think of the word digestion. So the attainable housing strategy initiative was a big part right before the holidays. It was in the news, right? All of the town halls, all of the considerations around it. I know there are varying different feelings around it. Some people are, you know, but that's because it's a huge concept coming out of Thrive Montgomery 2050. But it is, it's huge without details, which is why, you know, some people are nervous and some people are excited, but nobody knows exactly what it's going to be. It's just a plan that the Parking Planning staff released for the county council to start considering. And the council did a number of, of listening sessions. And now the only way for anything to move forward is for zoning text amendment language to be proposed. The council then went on their annual leave. They have just now, you know, reconvened. There has been no ZTA language released. But just this week, and it's been published in a couple of places, WTOP, I think had it at the post, what is now called Bethesda today, what used to be MOCO 360. But council member Will Juwando, who sits on the Housing Committee, formally put out a, a comment, which we will, you know, I'll put it on the listserv and we'll probably put it in the town journal, but asking that the attainable housing strategies initiative be paused officially paused by the council. Some of his concerns are, he feels, you know, he brought forth the initial ZTA language that was not adopted a couple of years ago around attainable housing. But that language was heavily focused at the proximity to metro and metro alone. And he feels that the attainable housing, their view being countywide, right? Their own admission is that this could change zoning for 80% of Montgomery County. He thinks that, that that scope is just too broad. And it does not meet the immediacy of what they need, which is more affordable housing and housing closer to transportation. There's also some realities that have set in from both the listening sessions and reading the text, which is that to create some of this housing requires a significant investment in infrastructure that the county is not prepared for. This is everything from roadways, but water and sewer, fire and safety. You know, these are incredible. In, in order to equitably disperse attainable housing across the county, there are some parts of the county that would need significant upgrades. There, there are big parts of the upper county area that are still well water driven. And so they have to do a lot more evaluation. So the council member Juwando asked that the entire thing be paused. You know, I assume in the next couple of days, we'll probably start to see more either press releases or comments from other members of either the PHP committee or the council at large. We're following it very closely. You know, I know Tracy and myself have talked to several of the council members about, you know, our feelings as it relates to the town of Kensington, those things that are positive, right? Those things that we think would work well out of the language, but also deep concerns. I will, let's use a real life one right now. When I went out to Farragut this morning, because we just had a, I'll call it a major snow event, but I'm from Minnesota, so this was not a major snow event. We had a snow event. Farragut has a lot of homes that do not have off-street parking or have limited off-street parking. But it's also a very, very narrow road. And once you add the fact that you are plowing down the center and that snow is not being able to be fully cleared from the street, it is tough to get, you know, a garbage truck or a school bus, but really fire and safety apparatus up and down the street after a major snow event. A attainable housing, you know, could permit a one residential lot to be turned into possibly four residential units. And, and that was something the county just never addressed is how does it look at some of the older parts of the county that don't have the current infrastructure to support, right? Especially after something like a, a snow event. And I think council member Juwando realized that there needed to be more dialogue around this. So like I said, I'll post it out to the listserv. And depending on the publication schedule for the next town journal, we'll either put it on the website or we'll put it into the, to the journal. I think it's worth reading to get council, county council member Juwando's direct words and perspective, because I thought it was a very, you know, thoughtful and rational explanation of why, even though he is one of the biggest housing advocates on the county council, he doesn't think that the attainable housing strategy is ready to move forward.
Yeah, coming from him, it was very meaningful. You know, that, yeah, there needs to be more thought. Take a pause, step back, and it's not going to get what, you know, the affordable housing, which is what we really need. So, no, it was good. So, yeah, I think we'll go ahead and put a copy of that in the journal. To, and. Okay, I think, is that it? I don't have anything else to remind you about, so.
Yeah, that's it. I, I'm just grabbing the link to it from MOCO 360. I'll put it in the chat right now for anybody who is interested. Is the chat? Let's see. So there's a link if anybody wants to go read it tonight.
Did I lose?
And that is all I have. Thank you.
Okay, um, I do want to put a reminder out though to staff and to Connor. I don't think we've put up the QR code yet in the park.
We have not.
Okay. I know it's not the best time right now to do it, but we should try to get it up in, you know, fairly soon. Okay.
Yep. Just, just for everybody's explanation, that is a QR code for St. Paul Park, where we are preparing to undergo some renovations and some additions to the park for ADA compliance, bringing in apparatuses that are ADA compatible, integrating it into our current playground structures and apparatus that are there and removing the mulch beds and putting down, for lack of a better term, like the flexi safe landing pads that allow for smooth movement across all of the play areas so that it helps with people who are in mobility devices and unsure on their feet, right? Multi-generational users, et cetera.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, because I could start as early as March, I think, if the weather, depending on the weather. Nate?
Thanks Tracy. Thanks Connor. I'll be very quick. I announced it last council meeting, but they haven't happened yet. So I'll re-announce the next two work meetings. One for Sustainable Kensington is happening on January 20, 21. And then we have our MTC and PBAS working group meeting this coming Monday over Zoom. The Sustainable Kensington meeting, the following week on the 21st will be in person. Also, just, just to say that I was reminded how grateful I am this last three days with the snow days and the kids home from school for being able to still access Warner Circle Park for sledding. It's just so wonderful that we'll have access to that park in the agreement that was negotiated with planning and parks. And it's just, it's so nice to see all the kids over there. I have to say there are a lot of sledding hazards.
Like going into the road?
Going into the road is one of them, some stick pipes, exhaust pipes sticking out of the ground. Anyway, we have a little bit of work to do maybe to make it a safer place, but it's just so nice to see all the kids over there sledding.
Yeah, it was, it was a big crowd over there. Cause I was in the truck with Jason and saw the, saw the huge crowd. That was good.
Yeah.
All right, great. All right. Do you have anything you want to?
No, I, I mean, I think everybody's covered the plowing success, the, the pipe break.
Okay. All right, great. The only thing I just, I didn't even think about this, but I was reminded today by the Kensington Historical Society that next year in 2026, I know we just started 2025, but is the United States 250th birthday. So let's kind of put on our thinking caps and see what we might be able to come up with to celebrate our nation's 250th birthday. So nothing elaborate, but it would be nice to have Kensington, you know, saying happy birthday to our country. Okay. All right, so I'm going to move things around and we're going to move public appearances forward. So before we get into ordinances and resolutions. So if there is something that is not on the agenda, you can bring that up now. I'm not seeing any hands. Oh, Joe?
Yeah, thank you. I was wondering if council member Crimmins might elaborate a little bit on what council member Juwando meant by a pause. I mean, I think some of the issues that the attainable housing strategy has brought to the surface, those are not going to be corrected anytime soon. Does, so does a pause, realistically speaking, mean that this is in the deep freezer for, for the time being?
I haven't talked to council member Juwando since, you know, this press release came out. I did have a chance. He and I sat and talked for 20, 25 minutes after the listening session that was at BCC High School. And, you know, I shared our, what's great is we have worked with Will on a number of issues. So he understood right away our viewpoint from Kensington. And we had a great conversation about things that could be really beneficial. And then things that we have really deep concerns about, right? We're an older community. We've got some older infrastructure. We also are not, you know, we're not the county where we have hundreds of millions of dollars. So we are judicious with the dollars that we do have. And we already have a number of stormwater projects underway, bridge projects underway. You know, we've had some land acquisition stuff that we've had to do. So he, you know, he understood that. I don't know what, you know, there's not an official, if you table something, right? In Robert's Rules of Orders, that means something. That means it takes an official action to bring it out and to restart it. To me, the pause, Joe, is his signaling to his council, fellow council members, who I think do see him as a leader on affordable housing and just more housing. And him stepping forward in a leadership role to say, I don't think this is ready for primetime or for any ZTAs. And that we, the council, the county council, needs to really go back and ask for very specific information, maybe more detailed assessments, maybe greater research, you know, more work from Parking Planning in order to better understand what are they trying to accomplish, right? If it's affordable housing, I think a lot of us understand from the listening sessions that the attainable housing strategy does not necessarily result in affordable housing. So if, if the goal for the county is to try and generate additional affordable housing, then an AHS does not do that, then why are we pushing AHS? Let's go back and, and target the topics that the county believes are most paramount to, you know, the next 10 years.
Very good. Thanks. And finally, I just wanted to add my voice to the congratulations to the town crew. They really did an impressive job. Their work was like curb to curb and that really was impressive how they, how they moved and removed the snow. And, you know, six inches and seven inches in the DC area is quite a lot. They really helped an awful lot, I think. So kudos to them.
Thank you very much. I'll pass that on. Okay. I did, do we need to, is there, I don't see any other hands, so we're going to go ahead and move on. Matt, do you or Alex or Susan have anything from the town manager and staff?
I have nothing to report if we can move down to ordinances and resolutions.
Okay, I'm ready for you.
Sure. Council before this evening is the introduction of ordinance number O dash zero one dash 2025. An introduction of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington, authorizing the sale of certain real property located at 3420 Plyers Mill Road, Kensington, Maryland, that is no longer needed for a public purpose. We will not be taking any comments or discussions this evening. Everything will be directed to the February 4th, February 12th council meeting. Council, we're going to ask that the public hearing be scheduled via motion this evening for Wednesday, February 12th, 2025, beginning at 7 o'clock PM. Please note that it is our policy that we typically leave the public hearing open till the Friday, to the next council meeting, which would be Friday, March 7th, 2025 at 4:00 PM. So council, if you would like to set a motion to schedule the public hearing.
Okay. Is there a motion? To set the hearing?
I can, I can move to set the hearing for the authorizing the sale of 3420 Plyers Mill Road, which is ordinance O dash zero one dash 2025.
Okay, to February 12th?
To February 12th, yeah.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Number two?
Thank you, council. Thank you, council. Before you this evening is resolution number R dash zero one dash 2025. Resolution of the mayor and town council of Kensington approving a variance to allow a driveway width of 17 feet, eight half inches Resolution of the mayor and town council of Kensington approving a variance to allow a driveway width of seventeen feet, eight half inches for the property located at one zero six zero nine Wheatley Street in accordance with section five dash one zero seven driveways and parking spaces, surfaces, excuse me, um, within the town code. Uh, the council motioned to ask the staff to draft a resolution in support at our December eighteenth meeting. Uh, I believe Kabir Archileta is on the call. Uh, this is the approval, uh, and the formal uh notice that you may proceed once approved this evening.
Okay. Is there a motion?
That's a quick question.
Sure.
Um, sorry, Darren, did you have, did you want to go first?
You go first.
Oh, yeah, I remember, well, I remember Darren raised the point about the language of it, but I just, um, just wanted to make sure, Matt, we didn't need to say anything about the apron construction in this resolution?
No, it's fine. It would be, uh, so the motion amended, um, amended, and then it was within the where, whereas, and then there's will be a condition on the permit, the condition within the actual physical permit for the Archiletas will state that they'll need a concrete or a concrete substrate apron, so.
Okay, so it's implied in the um, in the permit?
Yeah, it would be, yeah, so within it, um, just, yeah, there's a condition on the permit, so that's what would be with.
Got it. Okay, thanks, because I didn't see anything referencing the apron, but that's great. Thanks.
Darren?
That was all I was gonna ask about too, so.
Okay, all right.
No, sorry, Darren.
Yeah, it's okay. I'll get it next time.
Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll move. Sorry, Darren.
No, go ahead.
Faster.
Okay.
I'll move that we adopt resolution R dash zero one dash twenty twenty five.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I do want to remind the council that um the journal uh deadline, uh, we had moved it up a little bit because Carrie Anne was going out of town. She's had to cancel that trip, so um, the deadline will be uh Monday, uh, the thirteenth. So if you have articles for the journal, please get them to Carrie Anne by the thirteenth. And if you need a little bit more wiggle room, I can probably help you out, so just let me know. All right, uh, our next meeting uh is scheduled for Wednesday, February twelfth, twenty twenty five. It will be in person and on Zoom. If there is uh bad weather in the forecast or we've had another snow, we will go all Zoom. Um, then the hearing would be on Zoom, which we can handle quite nicely. But uh our staff is not as lucky as we are. They have to get in their cars and drive far away to where they live, so they don't have a one-minute drive like the rest of us who walk. So we want to keep our staff sta- staff safe, but we uh do plan at the moment to have um the February meeting in person as well as on Zoom. Okay, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you very much. We'll see you in February.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, everybody.